I mean, everybody else?
You got that?
I mean, we got like a minute. One minute, one minute. Ready? Okay.
Let us pray. Lord, I just want to thank you for all the work and good that's in our community, Lord. I want to thank you for all our city employees that go out of their way every day, Lord, to help others. And Lord, just give us guidance as we take up these issues tonight, asking your name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody silence their cell phones. Call the meeting of September 16th, 2021 to order. You want to lay this?
Sure.
Ms. Nancy?
Jim Adams?
Here.
Melissa Choate?
Here.
Chris Foster?
Here.
Casey Griffin?
Here.
Rebecca Prince?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Yes, here.
The press.
Okay, can I get a motion to read, waive the reading of the minutes for August 19th, City Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Nancy?
Yes. Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
And Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the payments journal?
So moved.
Second.
Nancy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the payments journal?
So moved.
Second.
Nancy?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Street Fund Financial Statements, Sanitation, General Fund Statements, Community Center, O and M, and miscellaneous funds for August? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Nancy?
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. I would ask if you had any questions for our supervisors, but we don't seem to have any with us tonight.
Marshall.
Yeah, so Marshall's going to take that place.
What, second week on the job?
That's right, barely. We have Marshall here with us tonight from the city, and Tim Burlington and Dr. Ashley here to talk about basketball program. Who wants to go first?
Yeah, if y'all will, if y'all come up to the microphone, so it's on the video.
I wanted them to speak first because they've got some games to get to.
Can you say your name again?
Tim.
Burlington?
That's right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not really sure what I'm presenting on, but I went ahead and made it back in. Don't even talk to the mic.
Just please, not directly, just in front of it.
Directly, just close.
The last page is actually a website that you can go to.
Do you want mine?
I can have it again.
You can have it all. So the last page is just a website. That is the director of the league that puts that out, and you can go on that website and just see some things. But what we asked the city to do basically was think through the current basketball recreational program for the city, determine if it's working or not working, and providing the product that we want. And from a school standpoint, we want to be a part of that decision and help utilize our facilities and just be a partner with the city. And so last spring, we met and discussed some ideas. I took some time to reach out to another program to see how they do it, and that's a league that this information is about. There's six or eight schools in that league, and we have the opportunity to be a part of that league if we choose to be. We think this is a good opportunity for our kids. We think it's a good opportunity for our city to bring in people that maybe aren't familiar with Heber or haven't been here, to bring them in to see what a great town we have. It's just a great opportunity, and we believe that from a competitive standpoint, there's some things that can be done to just help our program improve. That helps us from a school standpoint because we get kids who have had more experience and more time. So our goal was not to eliminate a program that was good. What we have here works really well, and we keep doing what we do, which is encourage all kids to participate. The program that we're talking about being a part of in central Arkansas is the same program that Rosebud, Mount Vernon, and Nova equipment, some of those schools around here participate in as well. So we'll be playing some of those other programs, and all of our kids should even be a part of the program, if it's not just for the haves. But there's a lot of information in that package, just rules, scheduling, that was last year's schedule. They haven't had it yet to determine the schedules at this time. So I guess, any questions?
How is this going to affect the city's basketball?
Well, the goal will be that, one, we'll take three through sixth, and so instead of having the third and fourth grade play together, and fifth and sixth grade play together, and have a lot of small teams that are intermural playing, we'll have a great level team, and they will actually travel and play other programs. You'll have a few more kids on each team. From a coaching standpoint, you'll have potentially half the coaches that you'll need, depending on how the numbers work, because you won't have to have as many teams. Because if you have a team of five, and you make a team of 10, now you only have to have one coach instead of two coaches per se. But just to help improve the athleticism, our coaches at our school right now, our new head coaches, want to be a part of the program as well, and help maybe train some of the coaches, and just give them some good skill sets to help our kids, and just be a part of it mainly. We just feel like that, playing a higher level caliber opponent is going to give us an opportunity. But also going to help our kids who, for example, my own child, if he's on a team, and he's the only one that has played before, it's really, really difficult, and he struggles to want to be a part of that. And so if I can give him a couple of people that will help, instead of dividing us out so much, we bring our kids together, it will give them some opportunity to grow as well.
How does that affect the kids on the team who are just doing to see if they like it? And so basically, they're not going to play, is what you're saying?
Well, the good thing about this league that's a little different than what you had before is you've got a program that's playing on Saturdays, much like our youth football league, soccer leagues, and some of our travel baseball softball leagues. So you're playing on the weekend, on that Saturday, but you're able to practice during the week. And so what I was, what I ran into this year from a parent's perspective is, once the season started, practices stopped, and we just played. But what we'll have now is we'll have the opportunity to schedule practices. We're going to use our spaces to allow for that. So the goal will be you get at least two scheduled practice times a week, and then you get to play on that Saturday. And so those kids who are trying to figure out if this is something, one, well, one, they're going to have a lot of practice time, they're not going to be thrown with wolves, they're going to have that practice to prepare. But it's also going to help those kids who want to go a little bit higher with their skill set, to get that skill practice on too. It's not just going to be, you can come to me the way you are, and we'll work with you, or that's it. We'll have the opportunity to develop the kids.
You guys are currently doing the Panther Academy, which our kids, my kids are a part of, and I think that's a great opportunity for kids to experience, you know, parts of the game with, and I love that y'all are having the older kids work with the younger kids. That's awesome.
So to speak to that, our two new coaches that we've got this year, they're young, they've got lots of energy, they want to be successful, you know, it's definitely something they want to do to help themselves, but the idea is that if they have a better product coming up, then they're going to be more successful later on. We're doing a Panther Academy on Mondays. I think that's about four or five weeks here in the fall. When basketball season starts, that'll kind of stop, but what we're going to do, what we're going to do is we're going to put in a little dribbler program for K-1, 2 at least. It could be higher, depending on numbers, depending on what we have. So we'll hit those K-1, 2 kids, and then we'll do multi-night, multi-practices, so where those kids are participating in the games, and people can see that. Coach Gay Start is going to be one of those that should be involved in that. And then when the basketball season's over, we're hoping to bring that Panther time back with those kids, and bring them back after school, will they, to continue that.
I want to back up for just a second. You said you guys started talking about this in the spring, that you had a meeting. Who participated in that meeting?
Yeah, it was a big group, some of the coaches, Ally was there, and some other people. I couldn't remember if you were there.
Was that the thing where you guys brought it?
Are we talking about SFA?
SFA? Oh, I think y'all brought it up, but yeah.
No, yeah, it was just a minimal conversation.
Okay, so it wasn't discussing this program?
No, not this program at all.
What is, has anybody run the numbers to see what the cost is going to be to the city? So if we give away our basketball program, are we giving it?
You're not giving anything away.
We don't want your basketball program.
I don't think they want it.
You're not giving anything away. It's still the city's corporate.
I think they want to work together. It was my decision.
They're willing to help us. We would still get the registration with responsible fan officials. We would receive the gate, where the cost increase is going to come in, and it's in minus, so we'd have to get better uniforms. Whereas right now, our cost is $9.50 to $10.50 for the t-shirts, jerseys, as y'all are aware, you know, Heber Springs Global, one up front, a number on the back. Now, if we're traveling to these other cities, and we're competing in that, and during the season tournament, it's our jersey cost, I think if we're going to go, we got to look at it. We can't just show up with the t-shirts. One thing with this league and team rules is you have to be, you have to match, you know, so we would now increase the cost of uniforms from $9 to $10 apiece, to about $32 or $45. And that would be a reversible jersey, embroidered on both sides, or pressed on both sides, as well as the team shorts. So the only thing a player would be responsible for at that point would be the socks and the tennis shoes.
And the registration fee.
Right, and then that would come out of a registration fee. Now, there's an increase in gate. Right now, the league's gate fee is set at $4 per person for a donor with the age of 18, not in school. They're going to make a motion this year, the commissioner told me, that he wants to move that up to $5 for someone with the age of 18. We currently run ours for $2 to get in, so it's really hard to estimate or guess how much that, will we see an increase or a decrease in the gate fee? The money's going up, but we're not running, we're not running three, four nights a week and on Saturdays. So it's really hard to estimate how many fans will be coming through the gate. We will get ours, plus the surrounding areas, the Bologna's coming in, the Maule coming in, Conway, Chris, you coming in. So it'd be really hard to put a dollar figure on what the financial impact would be with the program.
What's the financial impact of the registry? Would all that $34 be passed along to the parents?
Our current registration is $65 for the first kids, $50 for each additional kid signed up, her family. So that, out of that, you're looking at probably paying for the uniforms out of that, you know what I mean? But then that's going to, that also, that $65 also goes towards paying our officials during the course of the year, you know, so then we would have to look at the budget for that, because one basketball game is $50. You got two officials paying $25 apiece, they're running three games a night, so it's $300 a night just for the officials to officiate.
How many people did we have in the program last year?
209. But that was first grade through sixth grade. And our first and second grade program won't be affected by it, because they'll move from our Saturday program to a Thursday, Friday afternoon game, you know, they will take that nighttime slot. So there's, like I say, there's a lot of gray area there as far as the money part of it goes, because those kids won't need the $40 uniforms, you know, we can still get away with a $10 t-shirt.
Have we put all this on paper and looked at?
We need to.
At that, and then we need a contract, you know, with the school. I'm like, I'm really excited to get to work together, I think especially for the benefit of our kids. What's the mission of the program, you know, what's our mission, and that we have shared values on all of that, so that we're all on the same page as anybody, put any of that together?
Here's, no.
How about we're being kind of contracted?
Well, because that's, SFA, that's what they're experts at, and a little one, you know, quick one page, here's what this is, here's what we're going to do, but, you know, look at.
You may outline like responsibilities, what the school, we responsibility.
The cost, yeah, that way we just have it on the paper, and then we go into it all knowing what we're agreeing to, and, I mean, it sounds great to me, but I just think it would be wise to.
I don't think the school's really, school really doesn't want anything to do with it, like, so, I don't know of anything that a contract would say.
I think a contract would just be what we're willing to provide.
Yeah.
Similar to what we do with baseball and softball right now. We do a contract with baseball and softball to utilize the facilities in the city.
Do you think there's kids, like, the most competitive kids, like, right now, that don't play city league, play like travel ball? Do you think they would still even want to do this? Because it's still everybody league, you know what I mean, like, the competitive level?
I'm glad I can answer that question.
Because I think, because we do like travel and baseball and softball, and it's, we play Mount Vernon, Nova, and other programs, and it's not competitive. So that's what I wonder about those super competitive kids like that.
There's, it might be that there's room for competitiveness in this program. I've had kids that have played in this program prior to coming here, but I also know that the program that's just down the road from us, it's blue in color, but their name is green, and they have a city league program, much like what we have currently. And the parents are not, what they see when they hit seventh grade is the kids that are getting on the seventh grade team are not the kids that were in the rec league, but the kids that have played city league.
Right.
Or travel ball, I'm sorry.
Right.
And so what their argument is, the kids that are getting on the teams aren't these kids anyways. But they're doing a league like this, they're realizing what you just said, we're going on the weekends, and we're doing travel ball, and we're getting away, and we're doing our thing. We want to stop that here before it becomes that issue, and this is a way to do that, to make it more competitive for those kids, so that they don't look for that other alternative. Because if they look for the alternative, what we've seen, it is what it is, is they find the alternative, and they go and they hook up with other people, they get to know other people in that travel league, and then what happens to that kid? We're very mobile, and so they say, hey, we're moving. And we don't want them to move, we want them to stay here with us.
Talk about the number of teams that you would have per grade level.
Would have been on how many kids according to this paperwork? Maybe no more than about nine on team. When I initially talked to them, again, this had nothing to do with the city, it was just me talking to someone that I knew, I told them that we probably could definitely build two teams per grade though. That's kind of what we initially talked about.
But currently, we have how many teams per grade level, Marshall?
Four to five. Depending on what.
So what is that, what happens to the other kids?
Well, you have four to five teams, but you only have five or six kids on that team.
It's about the city.
The league is broken.
Current league, you have four about a team with five or six kids on the team.
Okay.
What we're saying is you might have two to three teams, two teams with 10.
Okay.
So you can actually practice, you can actually have a defense versus an offense. You have the ability. I was a coach for a long time, 12 is the magic number, I want 12 kids, you know, I have two subs, I have five and five, get after it. We can do a lot with 12.
We probably, Marshall, we probably have more than 20 kids per grade level.
Yeah, but the thing is, with our program, we combine grades, so our starting fourth grade.
Yeah, but I just mean, even if you break it down per grade level, like, I know fifth grade, they probably got 30 boys that would play, so.
Could you, could you work on those numbers for us, and let us see what those look like?
I tried to find a registration form from last year, I looked and looked, I got a bunch of those.
Did you reach out to Ryan?
I sent a message, I didn't hear from him.
And Stacy's out of town this week.
Tried to pull up the paperwork from last year, but I guess our league inspired, you know, the STEM rep program or something, so we weren't able to get those numbers. And the only reason I was able to find the 12 now is that's the numbers of jerseys we ordered last year from our sponsors, from our vendor.
I did like fifth and sixth grade basketball, and I think there were six teams with about six kids on each team, so 36 kids. But that was fifth and sixth grade.
What about the kid who is an outlier and has parents who are maybe not involved? How do they travel?
Well, it's the same way that they travel when we play, it's a great way to connect as a family dynamic and group. We connected with a lot of those kids and said, hey, if you can't travel, we have to take you, build friendships here, that's one option. From a coaching standpoint, you just try to build that up in your program. We definitely had kids that were.
When I coached, I had a lot of kids that would travel.
Definitely had kids that were not overly talented, didn't have a lot of support, not had a lot of parents to support, to take those kids. Same thing we're doing now with soccer league and our football league, you know, we have people that don't travel, and we help them out.
If you've got 10 players on a team and five on the court, is it the same five on the court every time, or the most talented players on the court? Because we're trying to be competitive, or do all 10 of the players get to play?
The league has some stipulations, this league does, on how you got to play, how you have to press, for example, you can't press above the quarter in a league, and then if you're ever up by 20, you have to come back inside the three-point line, and you can't go outside the three-point line. So it's built. This program that I've been part of is built to take care of the ideas that there was one program that was coming in and just waxing you. It won't allow for that. But when you're talking about playing, I don't think that's built into this, that every kid has to play at some point. I think that's something you have to communicate with your coaches, that what is our goal, what is our vision, mission, goals here? Is, our mission is to have kids play and enjoy the game of basketball. We want to play, and we want them out there, we don't want a kid sitting on the bench. But on the other side of it, you've got to practice time, and that kid's going to get practiced every week, at least twice a week, and he's going to get opportunities, or she's going to get opportunities, to improve their skill set and learn, and hopefully by the, if they're in it long enough, you know, definitely get more playing time. But there's always going to be an issue of, you want to try to put a team out there that will win, because that's going to be positive.
Well, but playing on the court is positive for the kids as well.
There's no mandatories, every player shall see playing time at regular conference games, unless that player has been excluded for disciplinary reasons. The only time that they say there isn't a mandatory playing time is the end of the season tournament. At the end of the season tournament, when the coaches play players at their own discretion, the best five on the court, the other five sit the whole time, or whatever, but there's no, there's really no stipulation, other than that the rules state that you must play, you don't forfeit a game if you don't play players. There's no rule, it just says that every player shall see playing time.
Well, I think that's why.
There's also a caveat in this league's rules, in that, you know, at the end of the season, if you're not happy with what's going on, then you have the option to opt out of that team in the future. If you have the option to go back to the draft, you have an option to do something different. So there's some things in there if you're not happy with the coach. But I think you always go to the coach and you say, hey, can you talk to me and tell me why my child's not playing? And that's built into chain of command. What do we do if we're not happy with something in the season that's not appropriate? Theoretically, there's five kids on the floor, so somebody's going to knock it off.
Right, I understand, but, I mean, you know, do the other five kids play for 20 seconds, the last 20 seconds of the ballgame? Or do they get to, do they get to participate as team players?
I would hope so. I would. We don't want it to be a program killer.
Right, I think that's disheartening to kids, and our teams here are small for a couple of reasons. One, so we have more teams to play, and two, so that everybody on the team gets a good amount of playing time, so that they are learning and playing. And, you know, we don't like to see stacked teams, we want kids learning.
But we still have them.
We do still have them.
I've been playing for a long time.
And I've been playing for longer than you have. Eight kids, I got them.
I know, but they've all been there.
But.
The stacked teams, I mean, that's not a thing. You don't handle that five kids on a team, we draft, and it's a snake draft. The coach gets their player, they get to retain one player as an assistant coach, and then it's a snake draft from that point, so.
Marshall, we know what happens, because we, I mean.
I think we've all been in the draft.
We've all been in the draft, we know how it goes, and we know that it's not always.
So inevitably, what happens in basketball is, you can have a great post player, but if there's nobody there that can handle the ball, to give it to him, he's never going to do it, you can get it. So the best player in our league may be the post player, that may be the best player, but if he doesn't have a guard to go with him, it doesn't work. So what happens is guards are heavily favored in the league in this level, is they can handle the ball. And so you're going to have stacked teams, because you're going to have a guard at some point that can go play. But what we want to do is, we want to develop those kids to practice, lots of practice. It's the same thing I'm telling our coaches in our district, is we're not going to have athletes that are going to be 6'8", you know, and can jump and do all the things we want. We're not going to have that problem. So what are we going to do to be highly competitive with other programs? And the answer to that is, we're going to execute, we're going to practice, we're on our fundamentals, we're going to do all the things, the little things, because we can't make mistakes and be good. So we're going to focus on those things, and I hope that's what happens in this league. I hope that you have time to practice those things, and you can focus on those little things, you can actually learn how to dribble and work, and then when the games start, we're still practicing, we're still working on that. So hopefully, I mean, what I've seen is it's been a big bit.
So as an objective, I mean, your objective obviously is to get maximum talent by the time the school program officially takes over.
You bet.
Okay, so what is our objective as a city council? We have to, $7,000 shortfall, by some quick numbers based on doubling the price of the jersey, and to serve the taxpaying citizens that elected us.
I just don't understand why our Parks and Rec director hasn't sat down with all of this, and, like, this should be a contract, like, we sit down, we, like, are we hammering all this out?
But I have a question for you, though, too. If we decide to do SFA, shouldn't they have some data on this already, and like, look, like?
Well, we haven't, I mean, we're not done.
No, I know, but should, if that's like in the, I know we haven't even talked about it yet, it's on the thing, but if that's something we were all thinking about the And like, this should be a contract, like, we sit down, like, are we hammering all this out?
But I have a question for you though, too. If we decide to do SFA, shouldn't they have some data on this already? And like, look, like...
Well, we haven't signed the, I mean, we're not done.
No, I know. Should, if that's like in the, I know we haven't even talked about it yet, it's on the thing. But if that's something we were all thinking about the last meeting and talking about it, should we be entering into agreements to do things if they're going to come and do an analysis on how we can be profitable?
Before they do the analysis.
And that's my...
How soon are you talking about implementing this program?
But I mean, we've hired people at Parks and Rec, we're doing everything else, so I mean...
No, we probably shouldn't be.
I mean, I think... I don't know. I mean, I think you sit, make a decision and then in a year we'll come back and look at it. But are we making this decision or, like, is this, I'm just confused, I guess.
I mean, I don't think we can probably have the Parks and Rec director make a course of action change that negatively affects the taxpayer without getting approval first.
So is that, is that what we're, so is that our goal?
But you mentioned a negative effect.
Well, so far we said that it's sixty-five dollars and we're going from whatever to thirty-five dollars in jerseys that apparently we probably shouldn't pass along to the poor families of Hebrew Springs, right? So we have to eat that. Two hundred nine people gets you to thirteen thousand. We double the cost of the jersey, that gets you down to sixty-five hundred. So either we have to make that up through increased admissions, which we don't even know how many games are played here nor what the attendance is going to be.
Five games.
Five games. So we'd have to make sure that we get it back.
Here's what I can say to that, maybe to help answer that question is, this is, from what you guys are saying, the city's putting in some revenue. So would you like it to just break even?
That would be, I mean...
I think it'd be ideal even if it was probably...
We've got a Parks and Rec that would like to...
I guess the one that's the program they're talking about, the one that I know personally, is not funded by anything but themselves. And it's flowing. So, and this, so I think that would be the person to talk to, Corey, which is the guy that's at, who this is through, with the Colonians. I would, I think that would be the question for you. Hey, talk to us about revenue, talk to us about how much you bring in, talk to us about uniforms. How do y'all do things, what you do? Because they're not supporting, like, anybody. The school is just providing facilities. And that's really what our stake in on this is, is we'll provide facilities and opportunities to partner with you guys.
What I would like, I honestly don't even really care about the facilities. We need guidance. We need your coaches. I think in either program we decide to go with, we could make it better if we had your coaches coming in, doing coaches' clinics and teaching the volunteer coaches the skills to do and the drills to do during practice. I think either way, we can improve the programs by doing that. And if we don't, if we don't have the coaches buy-in on this and they're coming in and helping our coaches and doing those things, both programs are going to be the same. They're both going to, we're going to have practices that the coaches don't know what they're doing. They're teaching a layup to, you know, kids that don't need to be doing layups or doing drills that they really don't need to be doing. Like, the buy-in to me is if the coaches are actually going to be helping us.
It's going to be real hard to have coaches in the current program that we have.
Why?
We only have two.
Because we have two, it's during the week. Games are played during the week and we play basketball during the same time. And so if it's on Saturdays and there's an opportunity for those people to be around during games, it's also an opportunity for them to skip the practices and do things during the week prior to games. But when games start here, our coaches are going to be gone because they're going to be doing school-related activities.
And our high school coaches, like, they, are they the ones, our high school coaches and you guys came up with this plan because you think it is a good plan to help our kids? So, I mean, they're the experts. So, I mean, they do this for a living, so...
Well, from our standpoint, this is the direction that we feel like we can get the most out of our kids. Train them, teach them, work with them, develop them, prepare them for seventh grade basketball. So we've got the biggest group of seventh graders we've ever had. Right? We would love, we're not cutting kids, but we would love to have a problem, right? That we don't have enough jerseys and uniforms for all the kids. Right now, that's not a problem. Right now, out of your league, we're only getting about eight to twelve kids to come out for seventh grade basketball, especially girls. So we've got to do something that's different. So we want to get kids to come out. That's why we're doing a lot of things on Mondays with the kids. We're ready to go this direction from a school standpoint because we want something. I've got kids in the program, Dr. Ashley's got kids in the program. We've seen it and I understand the vision of it. But my kid didn't develop and grow and improve. And so, because he never practiced. He just had four practices and then started playing. So we want that to be better. Well, I can't be a part of it because of the scheduling issues. And so we would like to go this route and from a school standpoint, we may. We may choose to go that route on our own and just say, well, we could join the league and do our own thing. That's not what we want. We want a partnership to work together.
Well, I know at least five of us have had kids in the league.
Three of my kids have left.
We agree that there's room...
Okay.
We agree that there's room for improvement. Now, how quickly are you wanting to implement this?
We've been approved to be a part of the league this year.
Okay. Well, here's my kind of quandary about this, going back to what Jim said earlier about SFA. So we've been talking about SFA, SFM for a long time. And we are finally at the point where we are bringing them in to help us. So we've gotten now to that point, so we're bringing them in.
We haven't signed the contract.
But you want us to sign the contract. I mean, we...
If that is what you think is best for our city, I absolutely think it is best for our city.
Yeah, we do too. I think most of us can agree to that. But we're, we are going to pay them a whole lot of money to come in and tell us what direction our program needs to go. And I'm concerned that if we go and make this big change and they say, that's not the right direction for your program, what do we pay them money for? Or how we cut our own throats by doing this prematurely?
But if they also say it's not the right direction, we could not do it again.
But they're going to do it.
Well, I think...
Here's what I think we need to do.
If for some reason ladies and gentlemen...
If we decide tonight to hire SFA, they can help us with the contract.
They're going to start this program.
They do this all the time. Well, we'll bring them in, I'll call Suzie right off, and this can be one of the first things that they help us with. We can get it all on paper and then make a decision.
Well, here's the problem we're running into is we've got to get these registration forms out. As far as, as far as I do, I'll totally be my decision at the end of the day. And talking with the school and everybody and them saying that they're going to move forward with the program without us. If they have, if they field one team in each age group, not two, not three, they take one team in each age group, our league is going to fold. Maybe not this year, we'll have kids sign up. But by the end of the first week, each team will play each other two, maybe even three times. And who's going to sign up to do that over an eight-week period? So if the school moves forward and we decide to keep our city league, we're splitting our program in half, we'll be the ones to suffer for it. Our city program will suffer the most. Because the next year, those kids aren't going to sign up. And then what I'm afraid is if we keep pushing this decision back whether to join this league, keep it in-house, coaches helping or not, we're going to run into the problem of registration forms making out in time. Giving our parents a chance to see that it's going to cost them a hundred and fifteen dollars to put their kids in our program and we're going to give them two weeks to come up with a month. And if they're set on a two-week pay schedule, they're going to get one check and that's the check they're going to pay us with. Being life deals getting shut off, they may not get to eat that week. So we need to, we need to make a decision and then move forward with it from that. Be it with the school and this program or if we try and set up our city league the way we did it previously and try to get more involvement from the school. We just, we just don't have time to wait and make phone calls and hear from other people and have a secondary meeting.
So the question about, why would the school choose to just move on without us? Why wouldn't you wait for us to catch up? I mean, like, we should work together, right, as community partners, the city and the school. I think that's, I think, I mean, that's...
But I think we see there's a need and my kids involved.
Well, my kids involved, her kids and his kids and his kids.
I've got six straight daughters and she had four other girls in her team. And they couldn't even practice. Sometimes the two other girls wouldn't show up, they only had three girls. She hated it. She was miserable because she, I mean, they weren't able to play. And, you know, she doesn't want to do that again.
Right, and I could, if we all said the same thing for our kid, it's not the, you know, it's not the right fit and we're in a hurry to move on to do something different. But for fifteen kids in this room, does that mean we don't think about the other kids in the community? We get in a hurry and we count them out because we want our kids to hurry up and participate in something else.
Where I've done this before, we didn't count any kid out. Every kid that wanted to play got to play. There wasn't, if they wanted to be on the team, they were on the team.
Well, I'm just feeling like this is like a time crunch, like, you know, it is.
I think it is, but I have pushed this, I have, I did this in the spring and contacted and had this direction and pushed it out to where Stacy and Ryan both. And said, here's the contact, here's the info, contact, contact, contact. If this is something you guys want me to get information, I can't answer while we're waiting.
Yeah, I mean, does it...
This is the first I've heard of it.
That's right. The first you've heard of it, Ms. Sharon? The first you've heard of it, the first I've heard of it?
I can, I can...
We don't, I mean, so I hope you understand that we knew, we have no idea what's going on here and now we've got to make a decision just like that.
That may immediately affect bottom line and the kids.
And the kids. And so we're, I'm, we're not trying to be, you know, adversarial. We need to work with you and you need to work with us and that's what's healthy for our community. Excuse me, but to do it right now might not be feasible. It might not be the best thing.
Well, here's what I spoke to in our meeting, I guess, last week we had meetings, we talked about it a little bit.
Who had a meeting?
We, we, I did. They reached out to me and it was me and Stacy and Marshall and some parents.
And asked the school questions. That was a question that was kind of raised, kind of what you just said, is kind of the timeframe.
Right.
This is already a system that's already established and running. It's already, that ball's already rolling. All we're doing is hooking onto it if we choose to do it. So from a school standpoint, we could hook on it and say, we're not going to play any home games. We can do that and we could hook on to it and we could roll. And the city, though, could hook on to it and roll, but they wouldn't give you home games, which would help financially bring resources in. You're going to bring more money in from a community standpoint that you're not even going to be able to put a dollar amount to because it's not necessarily going to equate to walking in a door and paying a four-dollar tab.
Right, I mean, we're familiar with how that, restaurants and hotels and we know how that works.
Plus people are going to go, hey, let's just stay here and go play. Plus people have, that's what we want to do is be a part of that process. But from a school standpoint, I think there's always an issue that becomes personal and that's the reason change happens for whatever reason. And that may be the reason we're in this place right now is that I felt passionate enough about the program that I reached out on my own about being really asked to. Instead, there's some other option because my kid didn't start basketball until January. And we had always started as soon as football season was over, basketball.
It was a COVID year. We had to get, we didn't even know we were going to play that year. Last year was...
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that's what happened last year.
You can't, you can't take last year and just because that was, that was a different year. We started later.
We usually start games before Christmas.
Okay, so again, that was, that was my perception. Doesn't mean it's the right perception.
Right.
I saw that and thought, my kid, I'm ready to go and start basketball. And so I reached out at that time to see if we could get in, you know, see if there was an option for my team, for my kids to have a team. And it was too late, as if we'd gone in earlier with them. So I just asked again later in the spring, if this is an option. And it's been a period for us to be a part of it, if that's what we want to do on the city side or a school side. I would love to have a partnership with the school. There's no reason for us to not work together. I'm fully, I want to be part of it. We don't want to take it over, but we want something better for our kids.
So are there going to be scholarships so no kid is left out of the program?
I think the question for that is, if you guys...
It would still be our program. We'd have to be the only program in the league that the city ran that school. All the other programs are actually ran through the school and are booster programs where their schools program. So as far as, as far as the gate fees, once they pay, once they get the money for their officials on their account, once they get the uniforms paid for for the year, everything they do actually is a booster for the school. From concessions, gate fees and all that. So we were actually the only one that's approved as a city to come in. That's because I spent time with Corey on the phone. And their only thing is, their biggest complaint was is that they don't want us to handpick a team. Put our best ten kids on this team, best other ten kids on this team and then move forward into their league. We're all sort of in trouble. That's what they're...
I wish we had time to have done a financial analysis on this.
We probably had more numbers than made it.
Yeah, and I mean, this is the first we're even finding out about it, it's either jumped or not.
I'm thirteen days into the job.
I know you are. I'm not blaming you one, I'm not blaming you one bit. That was, I hope that was not directed at you in any way, yeah.
And we know how hard you have worked in all of our programs. I mean, you know, we appreciate you.
I think what he said tells you a lot, that that program is a booster program. That means it gives back to the school in the excess of what they make. And so it definitely floats itself and some. And that's another program. And they've got three teams there, but I don't...
But this is a business and that's hearsay. And so if it's a correct answer...
It's the facts, he just said it. That program gives money back to the booster club.
That's great. Until I see it, if this were my business, if I'm backed into a corner and have to make a knee-jerk, any kind of knee-jerk answer, it's no, without a data.
And we don't have concessions.
I think you could ask Corey in the league and say, hey, could you submit your financials if you have holiday?
We don't have concessions here.
Now, would that something, we'd have to look at adding concessions to you.
We would have to. Kids would be in there all day.
Or maybe allow the school, add games there, let the school get the concessions. That way, they make money, we would still get the gate, all we'd have to do is provide a gate key.
Is that something the school is interested in, providing concession?
See, I feel like we're talking out of the contract.
Is that something the school is interested in? Taking over the concession?
Like, it's, let's get a contract together and then make a decision.
A concession that I'm aware of, the other program...
We don't need to hash this out at city council.
It's just a cooler with some drinks in it and some snacks. And they just run that themselves and they take care of it. They put a table out and they run it off a table. It's not a big concession stand for all the doors, popcorn, really, they don't do any popcorn because they don't want to mess up.
Right.
Because you have to clean up after them, so...
Yeah, we kind of don't want that here either.
I mean, yeah, there's going to be some money in the concession.
Well, I like Melissa's idea then, why don't you draw up a contract and let us know what it would look like or what the agreement would be and that way we can start...
But I mean, it's going to take...
This is not us drawing up a contract, this is not a school deal.
What I'm saying is if, if we are going to partner with a school with facilities or with resources, whatever, let's get that on paper. I feel like we have just thrown them the ball to try to explain what this program is and if it's better for our city. What, our Parks and Rec, like, that's what we do. Like, that's what Parks and Rec is supposed to do. So if we need to talk to SFA first and get them involved, let's do that.
I, I think that's what we need to do. That's what we're going to pay them to do, so, you know.
But as far as hashing it out here, like, this should, I'm just confused. What?
We are, we are too. I was asking all these questions.
Well, they came to present and so we want to ask them the questions while they're here to...
But then we're saying it's going to be, it need to be a quick decision, so then let's make a plan so we can get a quick decision.
The first game is scheduled for November thirteenth. They want to start, our first game is going to be November thirteenth or they could push it back to the twentieth to allow us time to make the decision.
So that means practice will start next month.
Exactly. I mean, I was going to start registration for September thirteenth. I was going to run it through, I want to say it was October tenth and then October twelve, thirteen, twelve, nineteenth would be drafts. You know, they will try, drop, 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 drop. At that point, you're looking at two weeks of practice time. And that's only if we're through with football season. The P B football season doesn't end until November sixth. So we'll be in the playoffs. And of course, playoff coaches want to go four or five nights a week and film studies and walkthroughs. And so we're looking to start a league really quick. So the longer we put this off, the, I mean, the less time we're going to have to practice. The less time we're going to have to get registration forms to give back.
Can Stacy do a study like this? Would it waste on the information that they gave, the contact that they gave? Can he do a quick study?
As far as the financial...
Financial impact, just like how it's going to affect everything, what the deal would do?
I can't speak for Stacy on that, but I can call Corey, you know, I mean, he was, he was really open and great conversationalist. So I get all the information I can, but I mean...
Just give us the data or whatever and we can take a look at it.
Is Stacy here tonight?
He's on vacation.
Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Well, I do, so if we vote and we decide to just keep it the same this year, are y'all going to go ahead with the board?
If our condition is one, two, we move.
Y'all are going to go ahead, okay. So that, just keep that in mind, that then we would have two leagues going, so...
I just don't want it to be like it's an ultimatum and you have to go with this league. And that's not what we're saying.
This is, you kind of caught all of us off guard. You caught us all off guard, none of us had any idea, like, I didn't.
We were asking, we weren't...
No, and that's why, actually, yeah.
That's why you're getting bogged with questions, like, are we, we're doing those, like, what are we doing?
So when we change the league, we're the first ones that get the questions. We, our phones would have been ringing off the wall. What, what is this?
Phones, email, Facebook.
Why are we playing on Saturdays? Why do we have to pay a hundred and fifteen dollars now for registration?
I didn't address that. I mean, that's not my, this is, again, I want to, this is not us, we're just giving you an option, but...
All we were asking is come and present.
And that's what, we just wanted information.
That's all we're doing.
From a registration piece, I mean, my kid played, both my kids played in this league, had been to school and they didn't pay a hundred dollars. What they did is they paid thirty dollars a week, so I think it was maybe fifteen max. And then we asked a sponsor, we reached out, where the parents just paid for the uniforms separately. Like, it was not the league that paid for those uniforms. There are other programs, I think, in this league that the program does pay. I think Mayflower pays for theirs and some other, and they did that because they could get them cheaper.
The previous district where I was at, where I coached them, I owned the uniforms, the school owned the uniforms. We passed them out, took them back up, passed them out, took them back up.
It's a good idea.
So that, that's an option too.
That takes a big burden.
You know, our option, we just, we just paid the entry fee and then the parents got together and said, just like travel baseball. I mean, it's no different than travel baseball. I mean, you go and you find somebody to pay for the uniform. There's an entry fee and you figure out a way to get the uniforms paid for. That's what we did. So it did, it did not raise the cost on that end. And people got really nice uniforms and some people got the basic uniforms.
Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you for presenting. Sorry for interrupting you.
Lots of questions.
No worries. No worries, Mike.
Thank you.
I have a question, is this, uh, uh-
Eddie. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business.
Thank you all.
Uh, first, we have the rezoning ordinance for South Ridge, Ms. Liz Lenkenship, and this is the second reading. And I'd like to, um, see if we can make a motion, do that by title only, so that we can save Ms. Rebecca's voice.
I thought we had to read it. No, it just has to be presented at the reading.
Perfect.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that'd be a good, yeah. Actually, I'd kind of like to hear it, I'm just kidding.
You can get the video from the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I will. I'll make the motion to-
Read it by title.
Read it by title only.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Nancy?
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Someone has to read it by title.
Yep, somebody's going to read the title.
An ordinance amending the zoning map attached there too, and for other purposes, is that it?
Guess so?
Perfect.
Any discussion? Ms. Liz, you want to speak to any of that, or any questions, or?
No, I'll make your next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Okay, motion carried, so SFA contract, um, I sent it to Terry, sent it back, SFA sent back, um, what Terry had proposed, uh, they changed. So I just need the okay to move forward if that's what you guys want to do.
Make the motion that we move forward, I'll second that motion.
Which is just exhibit A, the nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct. Nancy?
Okay. Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Motion carried. New business, the first item, um, budget committees. I would like for us to get together and maybe really sit down with the department heads and figure out what's going on and their needs and strengths and weaknesses, and kind of more of an assessment of a department and how we can, you know, improve the things that they need.
Have a long-term plan of their capital and-
I've asked for like a three and five-year plan, it might take them some time to get it together. Um, just to see, I mean, even as far as like the police department, um, having a plan for their vehicles, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, some assets to depreciate and to get new, that kind of stuff.
How many, I guess, just like we do at every other committee, there could probably only be two of us on there, right?
Um-
Or what are you, what do you?
I don't know if we all want to do it, just do, have like a couple of separate meetings, and then have our big budget meetings. And I don't know who all has the time or want, you know, to really dig deep.
Well, and we could split up like two and two or whatever with each department, you know, like-
That's a great idea.
Two of us take public works and two of us take fire, two of us, you know, and then we could come back together and-
And then have our big budget meeting and still meet with all the department heads.
But that'd still have to be a public option for that.
All of those committee meetings have to be if there's two of us, right?
Yeah. They, I mean, we'll have to notify the press.
So, and we can just, doesn't have to really, does it have to be assigned, I don't know?
I think, aren't we already assigned, like?
To a department?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aren't we?
But I don't know, I don't have my paper to tell who's on what.
I don't think we do a very good job of it, so maybe this would make us at least have to sit down with them and, and meet with, actually, I think I have a fire.
I think mine's Park and Rex this year, but-
Yeah.
I don't know what mine is.
Yeah, but you haven't got any.
Yeah, I'll take an assignment and go with it.
Well, I think that's, yeah, two per-
Two council members per department head.
Department, yeah, yeah.
Why don't you just tell us what they are, who wants to-
Assign them.
Can I email you the list?
Yes.
Yeah, we're already on a list.
Yeah, we're already on a list that Jimmy had done last year.
I can find it, if you get my office. And it'd be, it'd have all of this.
Do you have it?
No, sometimes I have-
I can email it, mhm.
And so you want us to sit down with each department head, two council members per department head, do it.
When would you like to reconvene? Like, do you want to do that this month?
Yeah.
I would say so.
Yeah, and then-
Start working on budgets, eh?
Yeah, it's going to be crunch time for budget.
Okay.
But we have to notify the press.
Yeah, two hours before, unless you meet with them one-on-one, you could have like a little meeting.
It's just if the two of them-
One council member and-
Let's just alert the press and get it done.
Yeah.
Notify the newspaper, and that's it.
And not it.
They just have to have a two-hour notification.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk to our, our department head, ha- ask how long they need, get together on date, let them know.
I think that's good.
Can you hear about our, our people, our department in bold?
Mhm.
Set that up tomorrow.
Yes. And, um, we probably need to set up a time to have like the big budget meeting, you know, to get that process started. Um, David said that he's pretty free, don't want to do Fridays.
Okay.
Which I don't either.
When do we, we usually start, October?
October, yeah.
Yeah.
So do you want to go ahead and pick a date for, for next month?
Yes, sir.
Anytime in October.
David?
David.
What works best for you? Tuesdays, Thursdays?
Yeah, middle of the month.
Middle of the month.
Middle of the month, not Thursday, please, so like the twelfth?
Twelfth.
Twelfth would be great.
October twelfth.
Twelfth is a Tuesday, come on.
Yes.
A Tuesday?
That'd be great.
I can do that.
So we need to meet with them before?
Yep.
October twelfth.
Yeah, that gives you plenty of time.
So an evening meeting?
That's almost a month.
An evening meeting on Tuesday, the twelfth?
Yeah.
So like right after five?
Six, five?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, be fine.
Do, you want snacks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
I always want food too.
So the twelfth at five thirty, hereish?
Yes.
Yeah.
Think go about twenty, twenty-five minutes?
You wish.
Welcome, big guy.
Just checking.
Yeah, that's why we have snacks. Okay, uh, B for new business, uh, the transfer station, um, is giving us a five percent increase on our garbage. Our last increase on trash rates was two thousand and eighteen, so we need to decide how we're going to move forward with that.
And the argument is it's an inflationary environment, everything's gone up.
Yeah.
I think that's probably something we can, at budget time.
We can.
But they're going up starting this month, September?
Yeah.
So we could at least have this month to see how it increases, I guess. Are you saying it's all, it's going to increase over two thousand dollars?
It's, yeah. Um, I'll have to, I'd have to ask Scott.
Is that a negotiation or do they just tell us?
They just tell us.
We can't say?
No, we just get a letter, just like what you got in your packet, here's your letter.
Bang this gavel and say we object.
Yep.
September first.
But like I said, the last time we had a increase was two thousand and eighteen, I went back and looked.
That was our last price increase too.
Okay, next we have an encroachment on, uh, nine twelve South Fifth Street. Um, Doug, do you want to speak to that? It's kind of the usual.
This is just our normal grandpa, one of the buildings got set back. It's an accumulation of errors, and it was done back, um, ten hundred years ago, and then GPS is so accurate, it's, it's causing problems, and that's why we have that. So they're looking at, they're looking to sell the house, and they're needing it for the mortgage.
So you need a motion to approve that encroachment?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to approve the encroachment at nine twelve South Fifth Street.
I'll second.
Nancy?
Two inches, two or three inches. It's two or three inches off.
Right?
Okay, Rebecca Prince?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Casey Griffin?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, I had a little sneak-in add-on right here, just to bring up, and then, uh, the next meeting, we can vote on it. Um, the purchase, uh, increase, the, um, legislature passed that we can go up to thirty-five thousand instead of twenty thousand on anything. However, we may want to keep it at twenty, I'm going to let you guys make that decision. Um, that's for any fiscal affairs for purchasing.
That we can go up to-
We can go up to thirty-five thousand instead of twenty thousand?
Without having-
To bid it out?
To bid it out.
Or, uh, vote on?
We'll still have to, to vote on, yeah, it'll still have to be bid.
Okay. Okay, right.
No.
Okay.
Depending on what it is.
Really?
Yeah.
But to go up to thirty-five thousand without having to have council approval.
Yeah. I mean, and we can leave it the same for a while, we can always change it later if we feel the need. Okay, open mic. Eddie, you got anything to say? Now's the time.
I think everything is covered, except I always wondered why we don't have more of the, uh, department heads here.
Well, two are on vacation, um-
Brian's hiring a civil service commission.
Yeah, police chief downstairs doing testing, and I'm not sure where Jason is tonight, you know?
What about Terry Lynn?
He's out of town. Okay, I got a few announcements. First, I'd like to thank Phil Burnham for his time at, uh, the police department. He's finally retired, he was with us two years, I think, so I hate to see him go, but I'm sure he's excited. Uh, we have After Dark in the Park on October twenty-third, we're going to do it here at the community center, drive-through style like we did last year, a trunk or treat.
We need lots of, uh-
We need trunks.
We need trucks, so, so your businesses, um, want to come and set up, it's always a really fun time for the kids, it's pretty easy. Uh, the candy is expensive, we're sorry, kids like it though. I, I spend about four hundred dollars a year on candy for my, for the event altogether, but it's, the kids are so excited and it's really fun, so, um, come, dress up, open your trunks up, pass out candy, we need as many, we usually have, I don't know, um, our average is twenty-five. Last year, I think we were down a little bit, but still had a good turnout, but we like to see around twenty-five, so right now we have two. It always grows as we get closer, but-
I, I got another one today, so-
We have three.
We have three.
So, um, but, but please, don't be shy about it, and it doesn't have to be a business, uh, you know, we, we have individuals sometimes come and, you know, we kind of vet them a little bit, make sure we kind of know them, but, um, but individuals can come and set up a trunk and, uh, you know, they, some people are uncomfortable with doing it at their house and kids coming up. But this is a drive-through event, so the kids don't even get out of the cars, they just hand their buckets out and we put candy in there, so it's super fun. Um, I encourage all of the department heads to, uh, to come and participate as well.
What time would they need to be there to set up about?
Uh, I think we start at six, so-